Good evening, everyone, and welcome. It's so good to see everyone. Look at this packed chamber after the summer break. We love it. We're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order and start the way we normally do with[14.82][14.82]introductions. I'll start to my right with our clerk.
Good evening. I am Christine Smith, Clerk to the Board.
Good evening. I am Alyssa Easton, Deputy Clerk to the Board.
Good evening. My name is Yvette Townsend Ingram, Commissioner of YTI, and I welcome you here today. I'm at large.
Hello. I am Mecklenburg County Commissioner Elaine Powell, representing North Mecklenburg, Huntersville, Davidson, Cornelius, and North Charlotte. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm George Dunlap, elected by the people of District 3.
Good evening. I see lots of friends and neighbors in the chamber tonight. My name is Lee Altman. I serve at large and have the privilege of also serving as Vice Chair. Welcome.
Good evening and welcome again. My name is Mark Jarrell. I've been elected by the people of District 4. I also have the honor of serving as Chair of the Board.
Good evening and welcome. My name's Arthur Griffin, and I have the pleasure of serving as County Commissioner at large.
Good afternoon. My name is Velma DeLeek, and I represent the most powerful district in the county, and that's District 2. Will all my seniors please stand up? So evidently, you don't need Medicare then.
Good afternoon. I'm Laura Meyer, and I see so -- it's like my favorite people in Mecklenburg County that are here, so welcome all of you. I represent District 5.
Ditto to that. I'm Susan Rodriguez McDowell, and I have the honor of being elected by the people of District 6.
Good evening. I'm Mike Bryant, Mecklenburg County Manager.
Good evening. Tyrone Wade, County Attorney.
All right. Looks like tonight I have the honor of doing the invocation, so those of you that choose to, I would ask that you would bow your head and join me as I offer this word of prayer. Father, we are thankful and grateful tonight for this opportunity to come to serve this community. We are thankful for all those that are present tonight. We're thankful for what they represent. We ask that you would give us wisdom and guide us as we embark on the business of this community. Help us to remove personality. Let us put people over personality. We thank you again for this opportunity. We ask for the blessings over our community. It's in your name that we pray. Amen. Join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We are going to move forward with our agenda. The first item up is going to be, or the next item up, will be awards and recognition. And for this portion of our agenda, I'll turn the gavel over to our Vice Chair, Lee Altman.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. And I believe Commissioner Griffin has -- is assigned for our very first proclamation, which is National Suicide Prevention Week.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Mecklenburg County, North Carolina proclamation, whereas suicide is the second-leading cause of death in the United States among individuals between the ages of 10 and 14 and 20 to 34 in the United States, there were 49,316 suicides in 2023. And whereas it is estimated that there are over 1.5 million suicide attempts each year in 2023, North Carolina experienced 1,593 deaths by suicide, according to the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. And whereas over 90% of the people who die by suicide have a diagnosable and treatable mental health condition, although often that condition is not recognized or treated. And whereas the stigma associated with mental health condition and suicidality works against suicide prevention by discouraging persons at risk for suicide from seeking life-saving help and further traumatizes survivors of suicide lost and people with lived experience of suicide. And whereas organizations such as the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention envision a world without suicide and are dedicated to saving lives and bringing hope to those affected by suicide through research, education, advocacy, and resources for those who have lost or struggle. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Mecklenburg County Board of County Commissioners does hereby proclaim September 8th through 12th, 2025, as National Suicide Prevention Week. This third day of September, 2025, sign Mark D. Jarrell, Chair, Mecklenburg County Board of County Commission. So moved.
Second. That's been moved and properly seconded. Is there anyone here from the community here to receive it? And if not at this time -- oh, please come down. And --
Donny Mitchell. Donny Mitchell. Thank you. You can go to that podium right there, and we'll hear from you and then commissioners -- behind you.
There you go.
And then commissioners, if they'd like to be heard after you speak. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It's a great honor, and we thank you for recognizing how we can continue to bring healing and hope to a world that really needs it. So I appreciate this. Thank you.
Wouldn't any of my colleagues like to be heard at this time? Commissioner Townsend Ingram.
First of all, I am absolutely delighted to see someone from my hometown, from my alma mater, Mountview High School in Welch, West Virginia, at the podium, accepting -- thank you, Donny. It's amazing to see you. Also a pleasure, because this is an issue that is -- it impacts me, and it is one of my priorities. And I'm just happy that we are marking -- marching forward towards removing the stigma of mental wellness, of acknowledging that there's not something wrong with you, that everyone should have a medical doctor, just like you have a primary care physician, you should have a therapist, you should have someone in your life that you can talk to, especially now. So I'm happy and excited that we are marching towards that, and I hope that we continue that. And I appreciate the Board and the county for acknowledging that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner Leek.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. This has been a major problem in our community. It's greater today than it's ever been, especially with young people. As a classroom teacher at Independence Senior High School, it was always dreadful to hear on Monday or Fridays that we've lost young people because of suicide. So I'm glad that they're those who're speaking out. There's a young woman who's been on TV talking about, what are we going to do and how we're going to try to change that philosophy, and especially for the community. So thank you for that proclamation, and thank you for speaking to it. We need to keep it before us. And again, we were taught as teachers to recognize the symptoms of the problem of some of our children and students that we had during the time, coming from the Health Department. And I'm hoping that we will continue to do that and that parents will please pay attention to their children, whether they're young, old, or middle-aged, whatever. So we cannot forget those who have mental illnesses and have those problems. So thank you for allowing me to speak.
Chairman Jarrell.
Thank you. Thank you for your commitment to the issue. One of the things that I want to point out is that I'm really proud of this resolution. I can't help but think about the veterans and how suicide impacts our veterans. And we have three veterans that sit up on this dais that I know each one of us are really concerned about that. And so I wanted to lift that up. The second thing I wanted to lift up was, there's a young lady that comes usually during the public appearance portion named Denise DeGraffin-Reed, and I want to just shout her out and say thank you for her consistent commitment in coming to the Board and keeping mental wellness front and center. The last thing I would say is this, is that each one of the Commissioners up here have certain passions, certain areas where we probably hone in more than others at times. And I want to take this opportunity to shout out one of our colleagues, and that's our newest Commissioner, Commissioner Townsend Ingram, because you have been consistent, you have consistently lifted the issue of mental wellness, and you've kept it in the forefront. It's something that you've championed, and I've learned a lot, and I think the community has learned, I know the community has learned a lot from you and your commitment, and I wanted to shout you out publicly for that. So thank you, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I want to say how important I believe it is to share and talk openly about this issue. It is the silence, the isolation that is a contributing factor, I think. And, you know, I've spoken publicly before, my grandfather committed suicide, my younger cousin has made multiple attempts. I have numerous friends whose children have taken their lives. I mean, I just, I just think that we all have to listen a little bit more closely, surround people with our loving attention when they're speaking to us, and try to be sensitive when someone's in distress, because sometimes the signal's very quiet, but we need to be here for each other. So if no one else needs to be heard, everyone you having spoken, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. And that is unanimous. Thank you. And our next proclamation?
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please come down for --
Come down and receive the proclamation.
Yes.
Just got to shake hands, coming all the way around.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is your first time, isn't it?
It is. You're my commissioner.
Well, you better come back.
Yeah. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Homegirl. That's right.
All right. Our next proclamation will be read by Commissioner Velma Leek. It's National Kinship Care Month, and we will ask our wonderful Deputy Director of Child and Family Services, Ms. Lode Holt, to please come down to receive it. Commissioner Leek.
And thank you, Madam Chair. Do you want me to wait till she gets there, or what?
You can start.
I can start. This proclamation deals with kinship. Sometimes everybody want to be your relative. And tonight, I want everybody sitting in the audience to be my first cousin, okay? Whereas this year, during the month of September, Kinship Care Month is observed. As residents of Mecklenburg County are proud to recognize children and the grandparents and other relatives who raised them in kinship care, who ensure their safety, promote their well-being, and establish a stable household for those who cannot provide it for themselves, whether they're cousins, uncles, or aunts, not just children, but our senior citizens. Whereas national, more than 2.7 million children and others are living with grandparents and other relatives, and kinship care, of which 85,000 of these young people or others, people reside in North Carolina. Whereas citizens of Mecklenburg County join to honor those who are relatives in the urban community, the rural community, suburban households in Mecklenburg County who thought the unconditional support, or through the unconditional support of their relatives, have successfully addressed the emotional trauma of being separated from them, not just their parents, but other relatives within the confines who give out of care for those young people or adults. Whereas the public becomes increasingly aware of the challenges faced by kinship caregivers, those who work in preparation for preparing them in education, legal advice, social service, mental health, justice, and other systems who exist services that can enable kinship relatives to flourish in all facts of their lives. Whereas children will live within a relationship with given family members sometime during their childhood or adulthood, care is provided, the best of opportunity to retain the relatives of culturally different heritage and community ties. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mecklenburg Board of County Commissioners hereby proclaim September, the whole month of September, and September is new, 2025, as National Kinship Care Month in Mecklenburg County, and encourage all citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, businesses, and others to celebrate kinship families and Kinship Month that offer safety and well-being for all who are relatives who are unable to maintain or to even take care of themselves. And this is signed by our chairperson, Mr. Mark Jarrell, who serves as our chairman. So moved, Madam Chairman.
Second.
Thank you. Having been moved and properly seconded, we would love to hear from our Deputy Director of Child and Family Services.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Jarrell, Vice Chair Altman, Commissioners, County Manager Bryant, and Mr. Wade. My name is Latisha Lodeho. I'm the Deputy Director for the Child, Family, and Adult Services Department in Mecklenburg County. I'm honored to speak before you all this evening to talk about kinship care as we recognize National Kinship Care Month for September. Kinship caregivers, grandparents, relatives, and close friends play a vital role in providing safety, stability, and love to children who cannot remain with their parents. Their commitment helps children heal, grow, and stay connected to their culture and their community. Nationally, over 2.7 million children live in kinship care, including 85,000 in North Carolina. In Mecklenburg County, 398 youth are currently in our custody, and 151 of those youth are placed in kinship care. 27% of those are in relative, with relative kin; 10% are with fictive kin. Eighty of the homes that we have are unlicensed, and 16 are licensed. I want to talk about how proud I am to our talented staff in the Division of Youth and Family Services, because they do, they have tireless dedication for the children and the families that we serve. This proclamation tonight calls on all sectors, public, private, and community, to support and celebrate kinship families who provide children with the foundation to thrive. Thank you all for your continued commitment to these families.
Thank you so much. Would any of our, my colleagues like to be heard on this? All right. While folks maybe collect their thoughts, I just want to say, to whoever can, who is in this room or can hear my voice, who has offered their home to a child that needed that support while their parents were not able to, thank you. Thank you. As a former staff attorney at the Council for Children's Rights, where I saw children in some very difficult circumstances, this can be life-saving and help, and help everybody get to a better place where people can be reunited. So just thank you to all those who serve our community's children that way.
Thank you to our YFS team. Great, great work. Unsung heroes, and we really appreciate the work that's being done.
Thank you. All right. All those in favor of carrying the motion, please raise your right hand. And that is unanimous. Would you like to come down?
Yes, thank you.
Congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you so much.
Representative Deltus, I got you. Get to my colors.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Did you try to take a picture?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And our final proclamation for the night, that I think we have quite a few residents here to help in joining us to review and pass, is Medicare for All Act of 2025. And I will invite the whole group, or who is ever here to receive it, down to the podium, while I turn to Commissioner Laura Meyer to begin reading.
Well, first I want to say that I was approached about this in 2021, and we are in 2025, so it has been a process. And we are finally doing this because of you. You guys are very persistent. You do not stop. So I appreciate your persistence, and I'm very honored to read this proclamation. Let them get him kind of adjusted. That's okay. You guys can fill in the hole, all of this, if you want. You have a lot of people. I know it. Okay, I'll begin. This is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Mecklenburg County, North Carolina, in support of the Medicare for All Act of 2025. Whereas every person in Mecklenburg County, North Carolina, deserves comprehensive quality lifetime health care, and access to care is not only a major domain of the social determinants of health, but also a Mecklenburg County community health priority. And whereas the most recent estimates from the U.S. Census Bureau indicate that over 130,000 Mecklenburg residents do not have access to health insurance, with greater disparities among younger adults, residents of color, and residents of lower incomes or educational attainment. And whereas access to health insurance benefits residents by consistently insurance can lead to financial burdens for families or individuals and further negatively affect one's health and increases the likelihood of a family or individuals going into debt to cover the cost of necessary medical care. And whereas greater access to health insurance can be associated with positive community-level financial trends, such as higher economic growth and lower levels of child poverty. And whereas the Medicare for All Act of 2025 provides a universal health insurance coverage for quality health care, including mental health care, including all necessary medical treatment, prescription drugs, women's reproductive care, dental, vision, and long-term care without co-pays, deductibles, or other out-of-pocket costs. It also censures a burden on safety net health care resources and offers the administrative cost savings of a single payer, ensuring comprehensive and quality health care for all residents of the United States. This third day of September, 2025, Mark Jarrell, Chair, Mecklenburg Board of County Commissioners, so moved, Mr. Chair.
Second. Thank you. The motion having been moved and properly seconded, we would love to hear from the community now.
Well, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Dr. Doug Robinson. I'm the Chair of Healthcare Justice, North Carolina. I stand here alongside healthcare and social justice activists from organized labor, our faith communities, the health professions, medical students, and many others to express our gratitude for your passage of this timely resolution supporting the 2025 Medicare for All Act. By doing so, you join the leaders of Durham, Carboro, Greensboro, Orange County, and over 130 local governments nationwide in affirming that healthcare is a human right, not a privilege reserved for those who are fully insured. I want to acknowledge Mr. Lawrence Brinson, who is here tonight representing Congresswoman Alma Adams, as her district liaison. As you may know, Representative Adams is a passionate advocate for healthcare reform and is a co-sponsor of the 2025 Medicare for All Act. I'd like to read a statement that Dr. Adams provided for this occasion. She says, "Today, I proudly stand with the Mecklenburg County Board of Commissioners as they pass this resolution in support of the Medicare for All Act. In Mecklenburg County, we know that healthcare is more than just access. It's about strengthening and expanding the programs that already work. Medicare is a lifeline for millions. It's a basic human right, and we must not only protect it, but build upon it to ensure that every American, regardless of income, age, or background, can live with the health care they deserve. I am pleased to support Medicare for All in Congress and urge my colleagues at the federal, state, and local level to support it as well." Well, clearly, Representative Adams agrees that the time has come for universal healthcare in America. The resolution sends a clear message. In Mecklenburg County, we believe that no one should have to battle cancer and debt collectors at the same time. No one should have to choose between paying rent and seeing a doctor. No one should have to skip medical care or medication because of co-pays or deductibles, and no one should be trapped in a dead-end job just to keep their health insurance, not in America. Unfortunately, our healthcare system reached a tipping point earlier this summer. With the stroke of a pen, national health policy shifted toward cruelty, stripping life-saving health care away from millions of our most vulnerable neighbors. Now more than ever, we must stand for our shared values of compassion and equality, demanding that our federal government guarantee equal access to affordable, quality health care for all. That's exactly what's provided to residents of most other wealthy nations, but not ours, not yet. Our healthcare system is porous, and people's lives fall through the cracks. When federal Medicaid funding is cut starting next year, Mecklenburg County resources will have to fill the gap. If we lose Medicaid expansion, an estimated 79,000 residents will join the 13% of adults currently uninsured in this county. Safety net services and clinics will be strained, and uncompensated care at local hospitals will increase. Lives may be lost. That situation would be inconceivable in a country with guaranteed health care for everyone. Now, to be clear, Medicare for All won't solve all that's wrong with American health care. Access to health care doesn't guarantee equitable health care, and that should be our ultimate goal. There's significant work to be done on multiple fronts, and Medicare for All will be foundational in addressing the social determinants of health and systemic injustices that perpetuate health disparities for people of color. By voting for this resolution, Mecklenburg County takes a decisive stand that will resonate from North Carolina to Washington, D.C., building momentum for comprehensive health reform, starting with the guarantee of universal health care through Medicare for All. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners and community members. Tonight, we witnessed something rare and righteous, a vote not just for policy but for people. I'm Reverend Dr. Janet Garner Mullins, a faith leader and advocate, and I stand before you with deep gratitude and renewed hope. Thank you for affirming that in our county, justice is not postponed, that compassion is not conditional, that health care is not a privilege, it's a promise. This resolution may not change everything overnight, but it changes the direction. It says that we are willing to lead with consciousness, not just convenience. To every black mother who ever wondered if her life mattered in the eyes of policy, tonight we say yes, it does. It always has, but tonight we say yes, it does. To every neighbor burdened by medical debt or denied care because of a job loss or a zip code, tonight we say enough. Commissioners, your courage will echo beyond this chamber. You've chosen legacy over ledger. And to the community, this is not the end of the conversation, it's the beginning of the movement. Let us keep showing up. Let us keep speaking out. Let's keep building a county where mercy means more than money, and justice lives here. Thank you for your time and attention.
Good evening, Commissioners and community members. Tonight, we witnessed something rare and righteous, a vote not just for policy but for people. I'm Reverend Dr. Janet Garner Mullins, a faith leader and advocate, and I stand before you with deep gratitude and renewed hope. Thank you for affirming that in our county, justice is not postponed, that compassion is not conditional, that healthcare is not a privilege, it's a promise. This resolution may not change everything overnight, but it changes the direction. It says that we are willing to lead with consciousness, not just convenience. To every black mother who ever wondered if her life mattered in the eyes of policy, tonight we say yes, it does. It always has, but tonight we say yes, it does. To every neighbor burdened by medical debt or denied care because of a job loss or a zip code, tonight we say enough. Commissioners, your courage will echo beyond this chamber. You've chosen legacy over ledger. And to the community, this is not the end of the conversation, it's the beginning of the movement. Let us keep showing up. Let us keep speaking out. Let's keep building a county where mercy means more than money and justice lives here. Thank you for your time and attention.
Hello. My name is Chris Barrett, President of Charlotte Metroline Labor Council. I'm speaking for the single payer healthcare and where it's going and how it can help out not only labor but also benefit everybody. As we all know, everything is for sale, and if you're not a billionaire or very wealthy, with most Americans fighting for scraps to survive in a world that is very unfamiliar. I believe that the single payer insurance policy might be the way that can help all Americans in these uncertain times, especially our labor force, who has to keep this country going.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so very much. Would any Commissioners like to be heard at this time? Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell.
Thank you. Yes, I just want to say thank you to all of you for the years that you guys have been pushing and pushing and pushing, and I really appreciate that you guys haven't given up. And I think that what I really want to do is say that, you know, as Reverend Garner Mullins said, this is not the end of something, it's the beginning of something, and this is not a one-and-done. I think you guys, we need to do this every year until it actually happens. You know, we all know that on the Fourth of July, there was a something signed known as the OBBB A, or I call it the BS Bill. BS stands for, I know what you're thinking, but it's the big shift. The big shift is happening where everything is being pushed down to us on our backs, all of our backs. And you look at every category, but I'm super disturbed about the Medicaid cuts that are coming. And I think this is the right time for us to be making this statement because of the serious nature of what's occurring, this big shift, this BS that's happening in our country and in our county. It's trickling down to us. So I want to, I want to say that I support what you guys are asking for, and even though we know we don't have the power to make this change, we have a voice, and I believe we need to stand up and speak to our values. So I appreciate having this opportunity to do that today. So thank you for, for bringing this to us, and I'm so proud to support it. Thank you.
Commissioner Meyer.
Thank you. Really, I can't say anything better than what you have said, but I do want to also quote Reverend Garner Mullins. This is not a privilege, it's a promise. Healthcare is not a privilege, it's a promise. And one day that will be true. We know it. And we, we're watching Medicaid, Medicaid disintegrate. We're, it's, healthcare access is becoming harder and harder versus it should be becoming easier and easier. And I really appreciate your persistence, especially Dr. Shore-Sachs. You, you are, you were the spokesperson, I think, for everyone. I don't know, but you and I have been working together since 2021 on this, and I really do appreciate your persistence. You wouldn't let it go, and it's such an honor to, to be here, to vote for it. And thank you all for being here.
Commissioner Val Malick.
Let me first say thank you for bringing in, into this chamber, many medical doctors, and especially a woman of faith whom I know well. Medicare is for all people, not some people. And at the bottom of your statement, everybody in and nobody is out. Health has become a major issue in this country where it is outsourced to, where poor people cannot survive, only those who are rich and becoming richer because of the new administration. Keep the faith, keep doing what you're doing. We all need medical support. If you've ever been under doctor's care, been to the hospital, or relatives of yours, you know what it costs. 25 years ago, we did not think medicine would be a major issue in America for American citizens. So keep the faith and keep doing what you're doing. This is your step one to making sure that all people will be covered by Medicare by coming down those steps, staying on us to do what we ought to do, and not promise we're going to do it, but we're going to do it. Thank you again for being here. And I want to say some more, but that's a religious process, and I can't do that. But to those of you who are medical doctors, thank you for the studying, the time you put in to be able to support us and keep us alive after five. I appreciate you so much. Wherever your office is, sir, you're grinning, I want to see you after this meeting. Again, thank you so much for being here tonight. Don't let this be your last night because you looked so good to us. You didn't stand when I said citizen. I said, there must be teenagers then. Thank you. In spirit, you don't have to be in age because some people resent folk who got age on them. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Arthur Griffin.
First of all, let me thank you for your continued advocacy on this particular issue. I certainly respect that. I've been taken to the woodshed about this by some folk who are, who I trust and love greatly, and, and I'm going to support this resolution. But as I said, to some of you, access to healthcare is not just a noun. I know my colleagues have heard me say this. Access to healthcare is also a verb. And whereas right here in Mecklenburg County, African-Americans die prematurely, more so than any other race or ethnicity in this city, from preventable illnesses and disease. Black infants die before the age of one, more so than any other race or ethnicity here in Mecklenburg County. Hispanics that have language barriers and less prenatal care have better birth outcomes than African-Americans. So access for me is not just a noun, access for me is also a verb. The overwhelming majority of people in Mecklenburg County right now who are on Medicaid, I don't know about Medicare, but on Medicaid are African-Americans. And if you have to work and your doctor's office closes at five, that's not access, although you have insurance. If it takes 90 minutes for a woman to go see the OB-GYN that's across town and two bus transfers, they may not get that prenatal care. That's access. And when the cultural differences as it relates to care that's received or delivered has a negative impact, that's not access. And so I want to see all of you joining hands with me and anybody else to advocate right here in this wonderful county that I was born in, a number of you, a few years ago, Dr. Malick, that we advocate for access to health, not so much as a noun, but also as a verb. This is a phenomenal community, and we can change the paradigm and trajectory of African-Americans dying prematurely or black infant, more so than any other race or ethnicity here in Mecklenburg County. My friend and colleague who's holding up a sign up there, Dr. Tom Hatchett, at a presentation in June, had a, had a slide that caught my attention. In a southeast neighborhood, I'll quote this, southeast of uptown versus northwest of uptown, the life expectancy is plus or minus 16 years. And he's talking about the Crescent. So we have people who have insurance, but for whatever reason, access is not there. I'd love to have you folk join me to make sure we change that paradigm here in Mecklenburg County. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Commissioner Townsend Ingram.
First, I want to say thank you, just like everyone else who's echoed up here. It's encouraging. I know we've heard a lot of discouraging news about healthcare lately, but the group of you, you're like proving all of the things that they taught us in the civil rights movement. I don't know why things are kind of whitewashed and made all, you know, bright-eyed and bushy-tailed and wonderful, but they fought hard and they had to continue fighting. And I want to quote two magnificent women from that era. Masor Coroda Scott King said that freedom is never really won. You earn it and you win it with every generation. So I thank you for all of the generations that are standing there now that are encouraging us to continue the fight. And also Zora Neale Hurston, because she kind of echoes what my sentiment and my personality is. If you're silent about your pain, they'll kill you and say you enjoyed it. So I appreciate you using your voice. I appreciate you encouraging every generation and all of the generations that are up there encouraging us, and we will continue to fight along with you. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Elaine Powell.
Thank you. It means a lot that all of you are here. I know it wasn't easy coming up the steps and going through security, so it means a lot. I moved here in 1986 to work with the Sisters of Mercy, to work at Mercy Hospital Maine and then opened Mercy Hospital South. And when Reverend Dr. Garner Mullins said mercy means more than money, I think of the Sisters of Mercy. I never know what you're going to say, but like right there, I went right back to the Sisters of Mercy. Mercy means everything. And so, you know, a butterfly died in my yard. It struggled. It was, it came out of the chrysalis struggling, and I couldn't even bear it. Like I thought, oh, I can't even bear to see a butterfly struggle. How is it that in the greatest nation on the, on the planet, that it's okay to watch people struggle? And like, how is that? And I, I think about it all the time. You know, we go to these different facilities that are opening that provide medical care, and it is a rare day, very rare, when I hear about the healing that's going to happen. There's a lot of squealing about economic impact. There's a lot of pressure about coding. I have friends that were still work in the hospital that are struggling with the, the pressure to charge for everything. You know, if a patient has kidney failure and diabetes, you have to charge for both. It wasn't like that when, when I came out of college. There's been a big shift and a shift toward profitability versus patient care. And so what Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell said about our voices, we don't have the authority. People are going to be mad that we have this resolution. They're going to be like, what were you doing? It's not within your authority. It is within our authority to use our voices. We didn't give up our First Amendment rights. And so, you know, my grandfather used to say all the time, like, what's it all about? And I think of him right now, and I think of Dr. Garman Brown, like so committed to doing what is good and right, and it is not good and right to watch people suffer. And so thank you for being here because, you know, you'll hear some politicians talk about getting rid of fraud, waste, and abuse. Well, this isn't it. Like people deserve healthcare. Thank you.
Commissioner George Dunlap.
So I promise you, the bell will not ring on me. I simply want to say that it's certainly my delight to have people reaffirm what we've been saying for a long time. You're using your voice just by your mere presence here today, and I'm so excited. I know we've been working on this thing for a while. I was chair several years as this resolution was being developed. So I'm happy that it is now over the hurdle and we can move forward, making Medicare for all a right. Thank you so much for being here.
Chairman Mark Jarrell.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. First, let me just say thank you to each and every one of you for being here. I want to thank you for your commitment to this important endeavor, and that's just, that's an understatement. I think all of my colleagues have summed it up very well. Reverend Dr. Garner Mullins used the term, and we're all quoting you obviously, so, but you said rare and righteous. One of the things I have to say that I am proud of this board, a lot of individuals up here take a lot of heat for a lot of different things. But I think all of you realize that this is a rarity, but it is righteous. It's the right thing to do. One of the first meetings we had in 2018, I believe Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell and Commissioner Powell was with Dr. Jessica Shore-Sachs about this very issue. If, if I remember correctly, it was one of the first meetings that, that we had after being elected. And so you can see to Commissioner Dunlap's point, how long it's taken us to, to get here, but we're here because of you. And you are like here because you care, and you care deeply about this community, you care deeply about people. And in my prayer tonight, I wanted to put people over personality, and someone mentioned people over politics. And tonight, I believe that this board and this community has demonstrated it. This is a reflection of the values of this community. Where there are a lot of issues that divide us, it is so heartwarming to see and sit here today on an issue that can unite us. And right now, I feel an overwhelming sense of unity in this chamber. And the final thing that I would say, outside of just being so proud of my colleagues, because I know that we'll have a unanimous vote on this, spoiler alert. But, you know, and, and my colleagues know I love to use sports analogies, and so I couldn't resist this. You know, to score a touchdown, though, someone has to carry the ball. And I want to shout out Commissioner Meyer because she carried the ball. It just kind of died on the vine a little bit, but she picked up the ball, ran with it, and tonight we scored a touchdown. So thank you, Commissioner Meyer. I wanted to shout you out for that. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you so much. I cannot add to the eloquence of my colleagues, so at this time, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. And that is unanimous. All right. At this time, if you can, please send maybe a representative to shake hands, but then we'll take a global picture. So maybe that's the best way to proceed.
Everybody come down. One person shake hands. Everybody come down to take a picture. We'll take a big group shot.
Okay.
It should be Jessica. It could be Jessica. It could be two, Jessica.
Jessica and...
Jessica, you gotta come, Jessica.
Of course.
Jessica. Short, dark hair coming in the white dress.
Settle that in. Yeah. Jan. Shake your hand, too.
All right, Janet.
I love the T-shirt. Yes. You're shaking hands.
All right, Jessica. You forgot about that.
I was, I said to Mark, I spent about three, two hours in her kitchen also.
Are you a senior citizen?
Yes, thank you for coming.
Get up on your tippy toes.
I know, it really got it.
Sam, you gotta get in front, Sam.
No, don't worry about us.
Yeah, like we're, we're in enough pictures.
Thank you again. Thank you again.
T-shirt. To raise some money. I was given to say to raise some money.
My lord.
You look extra pretty.
For curb, and she broke her ankles.
Oh, is that for her?
We'll have to catch that.
Absolutely. Take care.
Thank you so much.
All right.
All right. Thank you, everybody. We'll let that picture get taken.
I think they're so excited they forgot that we haven't.
Yes.
Great.
Yay for young people.
All right. And at this time, I will return the gavel to our chairman.
All right. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Next item on the agenda is going to be public appearance. I've got to read a pretty lengthy statement, so please bear with me. Public appearance is the period during the board's regular meeting that members of the public are provided the opportunity to speak on matters not appearing on the agenda. Members of the public who appear during the public appearance portion of a regular meeting may discuss any matter within the jurisdiction of the Board of Commissioners, except for the following types of matters. A, a matter which appears on the agenda of that meeting of the board, a matter which concerns the candidacy of any person for public office, including the candidacy of the person appearing before the board, a request that the board considers funding a certain program or activity, either from the current budget or by inclusion in a future budget. Such requests would be made at the board's annual budget public hearing. The time limit for speaking is three minutes unless there are four or more speakers who wish to speak concerning the same matter, in which case, all persons wishing to speak on the same matter will be considered a group and given a total of 10 minutes. The board reserves the right to alter these rules on a case-by-case basis as necessary for the efficient and effective conduct of business. Members of the board will not engage in dialogue with the public appearance speakers. Comments will be received and followed up on, up on as applicable by county staff and/or members of the board. Handouts and/or tokens shall be given to the clerk for distribution to the board at the conclusion of the meeting. Members of the public can also access and view the meeting on the government channel or online at mechnc.gov. Tonight, we have nine speakers. Remember, speakers, we have two podiums. I'm going to give the order of the speakers right now. First up, Kenny, I saw Kenny a minute ago. Well, he'll come back. But Kenny was up, Monique Mitchell, Brent Jones, Charles Robinson, Justin Perry. And you all can start making your way down. Justin Perry, Dr. Penn, Earl Owens, Tanisha Monet, Abdul Ali, USC. So we'll start with Monique and Brent, then Charles. You have three minutes, man.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, City Manager Bryant, and every Commissioner around the dais. I am Monique Mitchell, founder and executive director of Love Now 365. From the first time I visited Charlotte, I fell in love with this city. It was a love at first sight. I saw its beauty, its beautiful demeanor of neighborhoods, the luxury and elegance of South Park, the inspiration that radiates from Uptown, and the rich history and resilience of West Charlotte. Charlotte has so much to offer, and it shines as one of the greatest cities in, in this nation. I truly love it here. But when I arrived two years ago, one of the first things I was told was, don't go to Sugar Creek. Naturally, that warning stirred my curiosity, and I went anyway. What I found there was unlike the Charlotte I had come to know and admire. The prostitution, drug use, and mental distress I've witnessed on Sugar Creek and Reagan Drive feels like lawlessness, abandonment, and desolation. My heart breaks for the people who call this community home. Because I know that pain. I come from it. I lived it. And how could I, living in my comfortable apartment in Cornelius, experiencing entitlement and stability for the very first time in my 46 years, how could I sit by and do nothing while others suffer? And so I pose that same question to you as our county leaders. How can you use this, how can you see this disparity, this suffering, this forgotten community of Mecklenburg County and not act? Sugar Creek is not just a corridor or the black sheep of Charlotte and Mecklenburg County. It is a community of human beings, mothers, fathers, children, and elders who serve the same, who deserve the same safety, dignity, and opportunity as every other part of this city and county. It deserves investment, restoration, and a chance at transformation. I'm here tonight not just to share what I've seen, but to ask with you, ask of you to stand with us, the people, the organizations, the community leaders who refuse to look away. Let us work together to bring hope, unity, and restoration to Sugar Creek. Because when one part of Charlotte Mecklenburg suffers, we all suffer. And when one part of Charlotte Mecklenburg rises, we all rise. Thank you for your time and your attention tonight.
Thank you. Brent Jones. Brent Jones, then Charles Robinson, and then Justin.
Thank you. How do I follow that? Honorable Commissioners, it's a privilege to address you tonight, and I appreciate your service. Thank you. My name is Brent Jones, and I serve as a minister at Stonebridge Church Community on Prosperity Church Road. And I am also here tonight to advocate for the hundreds of human beings in crisis day in and day out at 85 and Sugar Creek. And I in particular represent tonight the faith leaders of the many houses of faith that serve that area. This is an area of great need, and that goes without saying to anybody and everybody sitting before me. You, Honorable Commissioners, are overwhelmed with so much, so please receive this as a better reminder. Just like with many things, it's simply helpful to be reminded of things that are important from time to time. I've been active in the Sugar Creek corridor since 2016, but I am not alone tonight. I've had the honor of partnering with a number of amazing saints, doing grassroots work here long before I ever showed up. Some of them are here tonight. We are thankful for the positive changes that have occurred at 85 and Sugar Creek, thankful for the increased lighting, thankful for the sidewalks, thankful that the economy in is gone. But for all the good that has happened, in many ways, it still suffers from the same challenges as when I moved to this great city 15 years ago. I believe we can do better, and I want to encourage you to give this area the priority that it so much deserves. American writer and novelist Pearl Buck wrote, "The test of a civilization is the way that it cares for its helpless members." I remember two or three months ago, I was at 85 and, I'm sorry, at Reagan and Sugar Creek, and I saw a woman in distress begin to remove all of her clothing right there in the middle of the street, in such great distress, tears streaming down her face, screaming, unable to keep her composure. Community support services work is so crucial. I'm sure that is active in this area, but we would love to see them up there even more often. We in the faith community are ready to help. During COVID, 12 faith communities in the area banded together with private enterprises and nonprofits and schools to serve 200,000-plus meals. We love our community, and that's why we're here tonight. We don't just want to see more progress from you, the county, though. We want to be part of the solution. Let us know what you're doing and how we can work together. Thank you. And as a person of the cloth, I hope you'll allow me the privilege of also saying, God bless you.
Charles, come there, Justin.
So, good evening. I'm Charles Robinson. Thank you for giving me a few minutes to speak. I'm here tonight because I heard part of the agency's mission is to build community where everyone feels safe, empowered, and has the opportunity to thrive. On this board sits retired servicemen, advocates, and a Charlotte legend. I'm here to speak on behalf of the people of Reagan Drive and to those in charge. I have to ask, where are you? Our representatives have now seen businesses shut their doors. We've seen neighbors lose hope. We've seen a lack of investment and almost a lack of care. The promise of a safe driving, safe and thriving community, for us, it feels like an empty slope. I'm talking about a place where we are no longer safe, where children can't play and sidewalks, on the sidewalks without fear. A place where it used to be a place that had Charlotte's heart and is now becoming boarded up. We're not thriving. We're struggling to survive. You talk about building communities, but a community is not just a collection of buildings. It's a collection of people and citizens with voices, with needs, and with the right to feel safe in their own homes. So I'm here tonight to say loud and clear, we need help on Reagan Drive. Don't give another mission statement. Give us a plan. Don't just give us words. Give us action. Partner with us. Listen to our voices and let us show up and show you what it really takes to build a community where everybody knows in that area is able to thrive. We need an opportunity to continue to grow. And I just want to share with you, to a few of you from Charlotte, Reagan Drive is close to the Old Wire Street right now. We've had children born on the sidewalk, and the mother walked away from her babies. We've had murders at the top of the street, and folk just don't feel safe. We have loitering. We're screaming and crying, hey, we're still over here, and we won't go away. We need you to actually come and have a conversation. Drive through the area, and let's try to figure out how we're going to work together on building and rebuilding. And don't take your foot off the gas until it's fixed. No child should be, should have to experience the trauma that those children are seeing every day in their life on Reagan Drive. Thank you.
Thank you. Going with Justin Perry. I don't see Dr. Blanche Penn, Earl Owens, Tanisha Monet, Abdul Ali, and then Kenny will, you bring up the red.
Good evening. 10 years ago, I was invited to a random house in Plazamidwood to discuss what could be done about the resegregation of Charlotte Mecklenburg schools. We'd form a group named One Mech and take a multifaceted approach to address this challenge, first getting CMS to reprioritize economic diversity and student assignment, while knowing we would not go back to the busing program that existed when I went to school. At the same time this was going on, the Raj Shetty study came out and talked about Charlotte being 50th out of 50 in economic mobility. Although it's less cited, it's important to make note that it also named Mecklenburg County 99th out of 100 counties in economic mobility. It named segregation as a key contributor in our challenges. This meant from District 1 all the way down to District 6 and everywhere in between, this challenge was our problem to tackle. One Mech challenged not only CMS, but also called for support in developing miss-income housing in this community needing help from the city, philanthropic and faith communities, as well as the county. That's right, the county who had historically been disengaged from housing with a few critical seat changes, a new open mind decided to engage in housing. A subgroup of us met with some of you all and the county manager and encouraged you to take a look at the land owned by the county near Greer Heights and DSS towards Eastover and to develop affordable housing that also had 30% AMI housing. Now in partnership with Dream Key, we're developing miss-income rental and ownership units with the potential to be a model for the rest of the community. We thank you for that. You've since hired a county manager who was wanting to pursue affordable housing and address mobility even more assertively. We're here for that as well. We helped create and lead the Color of Law Community Read, encouraging houses of faith to step up and help tackle this housing crisis while also working on items like source of income discrimination. One of our members, Tom Hanchin, has written a book, Affordable Housing in Charlotte, What One City's History Tells Us About America's Pressing Problem. Unlike others, it's a Charlotte Mecklenburg-specific book chronicling the ebbs and the flows of working to tackle this housing issue in our community with a focus on the role a government can do in leaning into it. He's given the clerk a copy for all of you, as well as a packet to support your reading. We're partnering with the library, the foundation, houses of faith, and other members of the community to write the next chapter of our story. We're speaking with you tonight and spoke with the city last week. We're inviting you to read the book, take the packet, and partner with us in shifting the paradigm of this community while taking substantive steps to create and keep affordable housing in every district in this county. An event will take place at the Carolina Theater early in 2026, as we're committed to moving from focused action from words. And we also want to make sure that we're focusing not only on the 157 people we talk about that are moving to this community, but the longtime members who've been here doing the CNA work, the service industry, the childcare teachers, and the people who we once called essential in this. So we want to move from being a world-class city we talk about to a world-class city that we live like. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Owens.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Earl Owens III, and I'm here this evening representing Genesis Project One as well as Reagan Drive, because that's where I work. You know, I came here today thinking that I was going to have a conversation about, you know, what's not being done, right? What's not happening, you know, on that, in that corridor. But I happen to work for a behavioral health company that is located in the corridor on Reagan Drive, 5104 to be exact. Ms. Greer, who was in the chambers up here, her window is positioned to look right at Reagan Drive. And you know what she sees every day? Well, several members in this community, in this community have already spoken towards that, so I don't have to reiterate what, what she sees on a day-to-day basis. I'm really pleased at how, you know, mental health is being recognized, you know, and our healthcare is being recognized. So this is kind of a segue to what I'm asking. I'm asking the leaders in this community, specifically who represents the Sugar Creek area, and also the county manager and possibly Ms. Townsend, to come to Genesis Project One and sit down with us and have a conversation. And while you're having a conversation in our, behind our walls with our locked doors, you too may be able to see outside these windows and just tell us what you see and help us, because that's what we're asking for, is help. Unlike the temptations, I am too proud to beg. But what I am is a concerned citizen, you know, and I'm not from here. I'm from, I'm from California, right? So I have the privilege of looking at the community with a clear view. And as a behavioral health provider, and as a person that spends my entire day helping another human being find something to eat and a place to sleep, you know, I'm in a unique position and a very informed person. So I'm asking you, 5104, Reagan Drive, we open Mondays through Friday from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday, and 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. on Fridays. I encourage the entire panel, if need be, come see us. Come talk to us. These people that have already spoke, we're partnered up. We just need some help. You know, we need you to see what we see, and maybe you'll share our vision, because, you know, we're not going anywhere, but we do need assistance. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Mr. Owens. Is Tanisha Monet here? Tanisha Monet? Then let's go with Abdul Ali, and then Kenny, you'll come after him. Abdul Ali?
Good evening, county commissioners. My name is Abdul Ali. I am a local business owner. I'm a proud father of two native charlatans, and I happen to be the chairman of the 12th Congressional District Republican Party. I'm here to remind you all that government's first and non-negotiable duty is to keep its citizens safe. Safe in their homes, safe in their businesses, and our children absolutely 100% safe in their schools. But so many of our residents don't see that happening. They see a local government that's losing its way. While their families are worried about threats in the classrooms, in the parks, and on the streets, and on public transportation, our local government is busy spending, according to a 2024 report, over $30,000 of taxpayer money on 17 chairs. And I only think, what could the people of the Genesis Project do with $30,000? What could the people trying to clean up Sugar Creek do with $30,000? And speaking of Reagan and Sugar Creek, we all know it's plagued with crime, human trafficking, sex workers. The people of that community need a The people of that community need a cleanup, they need a plan, and they need it now. Not just the cleanup of the trash and the blight, but the cleanup of the criminal element that has been allowed to fester there. The people of that community are seeing a local government that's losing its way, that's out of touch and almost out of time. I repeat what Charles said so eloquently. They need your partnership and they need a plan. To some, and this is for my fellow citizens, some folks assume that your vote is guaranteed by a party label. They'll assume you'll forgive, then forget the $30,000 worth of chairs. They hope you'll just say that it's the way that it is and give up. But I'm here to tell you, we must be united regardless of party, faith, creed, or race to demand that every level of government prioritizes its citizen's safety over some plus chairs, that a government that invests in school safety and not seat cushions, and a government that cleans up Sugar Creek and Reagan Road instead of cleaning out our wallets. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to request an additional two minutes. My name is, um, Dr. Kenny Robinson. I'm the founder and president of Freedom Fight Missionaries and I am here today, um, for one, to celebrate. It has been five years since we have been in existence and five years to the day somewhere around this time that I made my first appearance, uh, before, uh, this commission. I am here, uh, because Mecklenburg County, out of all of the other organizations, funders, and anybody else have supported us the most in our journey and we are thankful for that. In this work, I have my partner Jennifer here and I have our board chair, Dr. Kimberly Byrd, uh, in the back. She is a data analyst with Leading On Opportunity. And we have decided to bring a major announcement to this commission. We will be shifting our focus at Freedom Fight Missionaries where we are recognized as a housing agency more than anything else. So we have decided to shift our focus, uh, from just reentry services, um, to now include McKinney Vento homeless youth throughout Mecklenburg County and low-income seniors who are falling in a gap, uh, of only drawing enough income that puts them at 25% AMI and excludes them from rental subsidies and vouchers with programs and housing that's available for them, but they simply do not draw enough income to even qualify for rental assistance. We have discovered this work through our data. As those who are on social media and see our work on the news, housing families, well, I am the one who get the messages from the families who don't have a criminal background, right? Who tell me, do I have to be a criminal to get housing? Do I have to have substance abuse issues to get housing? I am the one that get the messages from the senior citizens who say, I've seen you house a family, what about us? I only draw $1,400 per month, right? And that's not enough to cover our, uh, cover my expenses. So we are shifting to a multi-generational approach because we have a housing model that works. So we'll be attempting to support the McKinney Vento youth, retain our reentry services and add low-income seniors to that fold that is going to be contingent upon funding. Using the work that we have done with the funding from Mecklenburg County to call out, um, some of our corporations and some of our foundations and ba- banks around Mecklenburg County to ask them to step up to address the 5,680 homeless children that we ended the school year with, uh, with 4,000 of them being black and 215 of them being white. That is our mission and y'all have it first. Thank you.
Thank you, Kenny. I appreciate it. Madam Clerk, uh, any more speakers? That, that's it? All right. Thank you. We'll move to the next item on our agenda, our appointments. Right now, reappointments are needed on the Human Resources Advisory Committee for two three-year terms expiring June 30th, 2028. Calvin Beaver and LaFonda General are eligible for reappointment. Is there a motion to reappoint?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Is there any unreadiness? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Next up, appointments for the Alliance Health Board of Directors. Um, there are going to be two separate motions for this. The first motion is, a motion is needed to remove one Mecklenburg County representative from the Alliance Health Board of Directors.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any unreadiness? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Madam Clerk, now, a motion is needed to affirm the appointment of Dr. Kim Campbell effective immediately and Dr. Reynard Washington effective October 1st, 2025 to the Alliance Health Board of Directors.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Moved and seconded. Is there any unreadiness? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. That's unanimous. Clerk, uh, next, appointments are needed on the Historic Landmarks Commission. Appointment is needed on the Historic Landmarks Commission to fill one three-year term expiring July 31st, 2028. The Chair of the Historic Landmarks Commission recommends Jason Tapp. Now, with that being said, there are two nominees. This was a carryover from our last meeting. Um, we have Destiny Crawford and we have Jason Tapp, who was recommended, all right? So whoever gets.
I'm moving to accept Destiny Crawford.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna do, I'm gonna call out the vote. I'm gonna call out the vote and we're gonna see by show of hands. First up, okay.
Okay.
You good?
I, I think I'm good.
All right.
Well, I failed to, to look at the demographics on this.
Can't hear you.
I failed to look at the demographics because one of the things that we try to take into consideration is that we have a diverse group and women have been short on this committee for some time. I just, I just want to make sure.
All right. So thank you for, for raising that, um.
I nominated Destiny Crawford.
We're, well, we're gonna take a vote. We have two nominees, Commissioner Lee. We're gonna, we're about to take, we're about to take the vote. So whoever you're.
Can I answer to that? On the chart, it shows there are more women than men, 60, 40.
Today, there is.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I think he was just saying tr- historically, there had been.
Okay, okay.
And so we're gonna go through the vote. Whoever gets five votes or more first is gonna get it. So first up on our list is everyone who wants to vote for Destiny Crawford. Let's see by show of hands. There's one, two, three for Destiny Crawford. All those for Jason Tapp, let's see by show of hands. One, two, three, four, five, six. All right, it's going to be Jason Tapp, who was recommended by, um, the HLC. So Jason Tapp is appointed. All right, appointments are needed for the Air Quality Commission. Reappointments are needed on the Air Quality, Air Quality Commission for four three-year terms expiring August 31st, 2028. Lisa Hooker, Janet Garland Munnitts, Ronald Ross, and Gregory, uh, Twate are eligible for reappointment.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any unreadiness? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. That's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Next, nominations are needed on the Air Quality Commission to fill one three-year term expiring August 31st, 2028. This is the general public slot. The Chair of the AQC recommends Gordon Miller or Daniel Kapuba.
Gordon Miller.
All right, uh, Gordon Miller has been nominated. Any other nominations? Uh, Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell.
I'd like to nominate Daniel Kapuba.
Okay. Any other nominations? Yeah, right, hearing none, no other nomination. So we have Gordon Miller and Daniel Kapuba and they'll have to come back, is that correct, on September 16th? So we'll, they'll come back and we'll vote on those. All right, um, next, uh, appointments to the Lake Norman Marine Commission. Nominations are needed for the Lake Norman Marine Commission to fill two terms. On this one, remember, all nominees must be interviewed per board policy. Let's go with, uh, Commissioner Meyer.
I'd like to nominate Richard Gaskins.
Uh, who did you say? Richard? Richard Gaskins, I see that. Okay. Richard Gaskins is nominated. Any other nominations? Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Robbie, uh, Mashop and also Gregory Truesdale.
And Gregory Truesdale, Robbie, Robbie Mashop, and Gregory Truesdale. Let's go with Commissioner Powell.
I'd like to nominate, um, Mr. Tobin, T-O-B-I-N.
Okay.
And one more, um.
I didn't hear you. What's your name?
Tobin, T-O-B-I-N, and Miltic, Michael Miltic.
Michael Miltic.
And I think that's enough, like, that's a lot of interviews.
Okay, well, I wanna.
I know, yeah.
I do want to let, uh, if anybody else says. So right now, Madam Clerk, who I have so far is Richard Gaskins, Robbie Mashop, Michael Miltic, Michael Tobin, Gregory Truesdale. Are there any other nominations?
And these are all men.
How many will there be?
Two.
Okay.
So how do we handle that since you said?
All right, so this, this is going to require interviews, so I'll appoint a committee to, uh, conduct these interviews. Once the interviews are completed, we'll make a recommendation to the full board. The ad hoc committee will make a recommendation to the full board, okay?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I think it's fair to, to when people ask the question, why are there no women? Not one woman applied for this committee.
Yeah.
I understand that. I don't know how we advertise for it.
Well, it's like normal.
So, um, Mr. Attorney, do you want to just speak to, uh, how we got here on this, uh, with this Marine Commission stuff?
Well.
There are a lot of questions about it.
This is a reconstituted Lake Norman Marine Commission and the board opted to, um, schedule interviews, uh, and the clerk then posted the positions and those applied that were interested. And so now those who apply will be interviewed by the committee.
Exactly. So the, the process is our typical process, the way we conduct, uh, any of these, um, open, openings that we have. So thank you for that. So.
Can I say something?
Sure, you can, absolutely.
So we had a, a large number of applicants that, uh, came in and then we had some come in aft- on the holiday weekend and the ones that came in on the holiday weekend are not on here, um, but will be held for the next, for a year, correct?
Yes, we hold them for a year.
Um, and so I just want the public to know that, like, if you applied, it'll still be held for a year if there be, if an opening comes. And I wanted to thank everyone who applied because we have never, ever, ever had this many applications for a Marine Commission. So it's like remarkable. However we marketed it, we had really good, um, turnout on applications. And so there are many people on here that are really great citizens who want to make a difference, um, but we had to decide on who to interview. And I just wanted to say thank you to all the people that applied.
No, no, I'm, I'm glad you raised that and I'm gonna come to you in one second, Commissioner Lee, but one thing I do want to just clarify, when, um, what Commissioner Powell is referencing, those applications that came, uh, over the weekend, they actually came after the deadline. So I want to just be clear that we didn't arbitrarily not entertain those applications. Uh, I made the decision, they came after the deadline. So we're gonna make sure that we're, we're, um, you know, being consistent with the process. So I just want to be clear on, on that.
I'm sorry if I wasn't clear.
No, 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 no. I just want, all right, thank Commissioner Lee.
And we've talked about making sure that these boards are, uh, integrated and what have you. They're all the white men except one. One's a Hispanic. So what do we do? Can we re- get and ask people to apply? Uh, we're gonna have all white men out on the water.
Well, I think what we're going to do is the way we look at this, and I'm glad you raised that, Commissioner Lee, one of the things that we've done since I've been on the board and I believe you guys have done this prior to, to me even being here, is that that is important to us to try to get diversity any way we can. So the clerk will be committed to making sure that we put outreach into places, not the typical places.
Thank you.
But all sorts of, of different modes so that we can diversify the pool. But, uh, again, as, as we all are aware, you can't control who decides to apply. Commissioner Dunlap.
I, I just want to remind my colleagues that as a tool, we have left a position open until you got the diversity that you did.
Can't hear you, can't hear you.
So we're not at the appointing process today. This is just the interview.
It's the interview process. Thank you for that.
So then we can rea- ask people to reapply?
Every, all applications, so in when people in the community are interested.
No, no, I'm asking, can they put out an advertisement for more candidates?
No, well, not for this particular period, they cannot. But people can, when, as we are, if people are interested in any committee, certainly it's gonna come out. But yeah, to your point, when it comes back up, we'll make sure that there's the.
All white men.
All right, moving on, everybody. Um, the next one, Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. Reappointments are needed on the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee for two three-year terms expiring August 31st, 2028. Toy Allen and Tom Rothrock are eligible for reappointment.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any unreadiness? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. That's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Uh, Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee. Reappointment is needed on Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee for one three-year term expiring June 30th, 2028. Sonia Sanders is eligible for reappointment, but we have.
Mingo.
Hold on one second.
No, that, the way that was put on is kind of confusing, but it's just the one.
It is just one, so.
Oh.
So we can cross out Ms. Mingo, it is just.
Yeah, she's coming up on the next.
She's on the next one. Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, I have a question.
All right, hold, hold on one second. One second. Say that one more time to level set everyone before we go into the questions, please.
The first reappointment is just for Sonia Sanders and then the second one is for Antoinette Mingo.
Right, so.
Both reappointments.
So there are two reappointments.
I have a question.
I'm gonna come to you in one second, Commissioner Lee, I wanted to speak first. There are two reappointments that we're about to go through. First one, just cross out Ms. Mingo because she's gonna be the one on the second one. Now let me come to Commissioner Lee.
When you say, so mean the next meeting?
No, ma'am.
But she's served before.
No, not on the next meeting. We're gonna vote on both of them right now.
The question I have, has Ms. Mingo served before?
She has, she's serving right now. It's a, it's a reappointment.
And how long has she been on the board?
Um, we have that information, but it.
I can't hear you.
It will take me a second to get that information, but we have it. It's, it's part of the packet.
Term hasn't expired.
So she's had, she's served a three-year term.
They have been, these, these people have been serving because we don't have, we have so many vacancies, they just keep getting reappointed.
She served when others wouldn't.
I think a motion, it's a. Did that answer your question, Commissioner?
No, it doesn't.
We're getting it.
So we, she's already served a, 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 a three-year term, correct?
Yes, yes, sir. She's probably served several, but we'll find out, um, how many.
All right, so we're gonna, we're gonna carry, we're gonna carry the motion. All those in favor, uh, we got a motion on the floor for Sonia Sanders, who's eligible for reappointment. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, so one opposed on that one, Madam Clerk. Now, we're gonna go to the next one. This one is dealing with Ms. Mingo. Reappointment is needed on the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee for one three-year term expiring September 30th, 2028, effective October 1st, 2025. Antoinette Mingo is eligible for reappointment.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded. Now, let me get her, there's an unreadiness. Do you have the number of terms that she served?
I guess I was looking it up.
I thought that was the question that you were trying to get answered. No? Okay.
There's no limit to the number of terms they can serve.
Right, I'm sorry, I thought you wanted that number.
There normally would be. It's just that we have so many vacancies that they have volunteered to continue to be reappointed. There normally would be. It's just that we have so many vacancies that they have volunteered to continue to be reappointed.
Because she would serve when others would not.
Yeah, she's right.
That's correct.
Yeah.
That's all I'm doing, making sure that she...
All right.
We have so many vacancies, and we've been advertising. Even when we advertise for a recent vacancy, we always still focus on nursing home and the adult care.
Hold, hold on, Commissioner, by T.I., 'cause we can't, we can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just, this is just for, I feel like it's my own personal edification, 'cause I'm new, and I'm gonna use that for forever. But I was just asking, are there still vac- are there still vacancies?
Always.
Yes, yes.
And that's what she was saying. There's always.
That's, that's the, that's the whole crux of what we're dealing with tonight, so thank you. All right, all those, we've got a motion. It's been properly seconded. We have another unreadiness. Commissioner Lee.
No, 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 I read your vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I second. Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to say that Sonia, what's her last name? Saunders, has been serving since 2014.
I'm sorry.
She has been serving since 2000.
I know that.
All right, let's carry the motion, please. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Moving on. All right, we're gonna move on to the next item on the agenda, which is public hearings, all right? We've got quite a few business location and expansion projects. So, motion is needed to open a public hearing to receive comments on a proposed business investment program grant to Torremont USA Inc. and ABL USA Inc.
So, moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. We'll go to you, Clay.
All right. Commissioner Jarrell, Vice, Vice Chair Altman, and County Manager Bryant. It's great to be here tonight. I'm Clay Andrews. I'm with your Office of Economic Development, Mecklenburg County Office of Economic Development. And I am privileged to present for your consideration a business investment grant. Hopefully, this will be good news for citizens of Mecklenburg County, for Torremont USA and ABL USA Inc. First, little company background here. See if I can get my little clicker working. Torremont is a Canadian publicly traded company founded in 1961. They're divided into two groups. One is the Equipment Group, Torremont, and one is Simco. Equipment Group makes advanced stationary and mobile machines for industrial use, which in Canada includes Caterpillar products. Simco specializes in refrigeration equipment. They currently have an operation in South Carolina. This will be the first U.S.-based location under the Equipment Group branch, production and assembly of generator enclosures for power redundancy. Basically, metal cabinets that are used in data centers. Project details on this are, it's a $56 million new taxable investment, just over $56 million. $46 million, $15,800 of that in real property, and about $10 million in business personal property. The average wage is three, is $76,052 for 326 new employees, and we are competing with Womago, Kansas for this deal. The project location is in the Steel Creek Submarket at 13006 Sam Neely Road. It's in Commission District 6. And the incentives that have been proposed are as follows. The county is offering five years at 50% for an amount of $641,506. The City of Charlotte has offered five years at 90% for $655,157. The State of North Carolina is contributing at a one NC grant, which is very rare for this county. It's a $100,000 grant, and the community colleges are offering $586,000 as a training grant for a total of $1,982,663. There's a variety of positions open here. You can see the average wage is $31 an hour for these positions. The Charlotte, Mecklenburg average wage is $31 an hour. The average for these positions is $36.56. The nice thing about these jobs is it's a wide variety. Some are skilled, some are less skilled, more apprentice-type jobs. Some require training of more professional licensing. Some are unlicensed. So, there's a very nice ladder here of skills necessary, and it's manufacturing jobs of the type that they support a family, but does not require college education necessarily. So, the next thing we do, of course, is we always look at this from a cost-benefit standpoint to make sure that the county benefits from these projects. And in this case, you can see that Torremont USA and ABL, they're listed as two companies because one company will own the real estate, one will manage the people. They're expected to create an additional 326 jobs by the end of the five-year term. That's above and beyond what their employment numbers are. So, those are jobs that are here because the company's here, but not necessarily company jobs. So, it could be people working on their air conditioner, or people who are cutting their grass, or things like that, that aren't company employees, but they have jobs because this company's here. Torremont USA and ABL USA Inc. are expected to create an additional cumulative net of $306,775 in sales tax revenue by the end of year five. Torremont USA and ABL USA Inc. is expected to net the county $220,800 in revenue in the final year of the grant term for a cumulative net of $1,43,124 over five years. We also, of course, take a look at the type of company that they are. We try to do kind of a little character study. And here, we see that many of these positions do not require a college degree. They feature, the company features a four-year training program for apprentice technicians, on-the-job training. They have co-op intern programs for high school, community college, and university students. And in their home country, in Canada, they have been the winner of several awards for recognition for extraordinary service to education. So, they, they ally very closely with their educational partners. The company offers a robust benefits package that includes insurance, sick time, vacation, et cetera, for qualifying employees, tuition reimbursement, and they have committed to work with our local community college system here, Central Piedmont. And there are other ones that you can see on here that show that they are likely very good corporate citizens. They focus on women, indigenous peoples, disabled, members of visible minorities. They sponsor and support a program for high school girls to get involved in the construction industry. And women make up 40% of their Leaders of Tomorrow program. And then they support United Way, March of Dimes, Habitat for Humanity, and Canadian Blood Services, and they do hire Justice Involved people. So, tonight, we are requesting that the Board of County Commissioners to vote and adopt a resolution to approve a five-year, 50% business investment program grant to Torremont USA and ABL USA Inc. for not to exceed amount of $641,506, and to authorize the county manager to negotiate and execute the contract.
So moved.
This concludes my presentation.
No, we have to close.
Hold, hold on one second, team, before, I'm gonna come to you, but this requires us to close the public hearing.
Yes, sir.
And then adopt the resolution. So, before that, let me take question. What, and this is how I wanna do it. The Economic Development Committee has had a chance to see all of these public hearings. Madam Clerk, you're gonna set the clock. Got two minutes for everybody. I'm gonna go to the Chair of the Economic Development Committee first for comment, if any. Those members that are not part of the committee get priority. You get two minutes. And, you know, hopefully, Economic Development Committee, you guys have asked all of your questions in, in the committee and made your comments. So, with that being said, once we do that, we'll go through the questions. Clay will answer. We'll close the public hearing, and we'll vote to either adopt or not adopt. Everybody clear?
No, I'm not clear.
And you got two min-, and we're gonna give everybody two minutes.
I'm not clear. I'm not clear.
Okay.
When you say those who do not serve on the committee, we must listen to the committee first.
No. Those who not...
That's why I asked the question.
Okay, thank you. Obviously, I'm not communicating effectively, team, and I apologize for that. What I'm trying to do is allow for those that are not on the Economic Development Committee to have priority to ask Clay questions. But I wanted to go to the Chair of Economic Development first to tee things up for us.
Thank you.
So, my apologies, everyone. Let me go to the Chair of Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Clay, for the presentation. On behalf of the committee, we unanimously supported this. We're excited about the opportunities that this will bring to the community, especially the corporate culture that they bring, and the jobs at different wages, and, and that there's no degree necessary with a lot of the jobs, and the benefits that they will bring. So, we are super excited about this company, and we really hope that we're able to get this. So, so on behalf of the committee, we all, we voted unanimously in favor.
Thank you for that. And I saw Commissioner Powell and Commissioner Townsend Ingram.
So, I pulled it up on the map to see if, if there is already a building there. Can you speak to that? Like, I see a building.
It's a brand-new building, newly constructed building. It wasn't constructed for them. It was a spec building.
So, it's a spec building, and then this is where they would go into?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Townsend Ingram.
This is actually probably not just about this organization, but I wanna be able to think a little bit more differently in hearing from the community about how we leverage incentives that we give them, how we leverage that to be able to get what we need for the community, the community engagement. For instance, our priorities are transportation and childcare and things of that nature. Is there an opportunity, maybe not with this one, but with some other organization, I guess I'm addressing this to as well, our, our Chair, to say, if you invest in a transportation fund for your employees or for the community, or if you provide childcare, some other something that's a carrot, that you, they can dangle to say, you know what? You get a little bit more. You get a little bit more consideration or incentive. Because I think that we need to align the incentive, align the, the grant program and the opportunities with what our needs are here in the community. If we need it, and we're asking for corporations to, to engage with our community, you know, broadly, yeah, that's something that they needed in Canada. They needed this here, that there, and we definitely always need education. But today, now, these are the things that we need here in our community. Is there an opportunity to do that?
We do usually look for this in the companies that we vet, and if you'll note, we can't accommodate every commission priority in every company. You just can't. But what we do look for is the opportunities where they do match up. For instance, this company offers second chance hiring. That is a commission priority. This company offers educational resources above and beyond just going to school. That is a commission priority. It does help the people who have jobs there to progress from one job to another, and perhaps better their lot in life, even without moving to a different company. So, many of the things we do are specifically aimed, or we vet, are to attract companies that do align with the commission priorities. We don't have to ask them to do that when they come here. They're already doing it.
Right. That's not my question, though.
Oh, I must have misunderstood.
My question is, can we change it?
Hold on, Commissioner Townsend Ingram. Give me one second. I'm gonna give you some extra latitude. The bell, the bell sounded on. I'm gonna give you extra latitude, 'cause you're not a part of the committee. So, if you'll finish that question, and then we'll, we'll see if we can get to it.
Well, maybe that's something that I can do broadly. Specifically for this motion and for this organization, I'm satisfied. But I'm not satisfied with, you know, saying, like, what are the criteria? Who, who established the criteria for allowing the, you know, the incentives that they bring? Yes, that they're bringing jobs here. You know, we ask, well, how many jobs, and what are the classification? And can we fill the jobs of those, of people that are already here versus bringing your, your group of people here to fill those jobs? What I'm saying is, I need another set of criteria that we will look at in leveraging and asking corporations. Can you, you know, our thing right now is transportation. You get, you get...
Right, right. So, I, I, I think we get where you're saying. You're saying, how was the criteria established? And, and I think that's where, Mr. Manager, we could probably just go offline. I, I think that's a legitimate question, you as a new commissioner, but it's gonna take more than just sort of like this setting to go into it. But that's, that's legit.
I'll take every opportunity.
And, Mr. Manager, if you wanna...
We, we can provide, Commissioner Townsend Ingram, an orientation to the overall program. I think that'll respond to a lot of your questions, and you can see the criteria that we're currently utilizing to offer these grants and incentives.
That's right. Commissioner Lee.
Thank you. I perused this information, and I communicated with the chairperson, and I'm seeing that it's going to be in Steel Creek. Am I right?
Yes.
All right. So, how many employees will we need from that region to Mecklenburg County?
How many employees?
Jo- jobs, jobs.
Uh, well, they are looking at 326 jobs.
And that Central Piedmont is available for its training if necessary?
Yes, they are. And the company has committed that they will work with Central Piedmont.
With CPCC?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Lee. All right, at this time, what we'll do is, I will entertain a motion, number one, to close the public hearing, and then to adopt a resolution approving a business investment program grant to Torremont USA Inc. and ABL USA Inc. for not to exceed amount of $641,506, and authorize the county manager to negotiate and execute the contract.
So moved, Mr. Chairman. To close the public hearing.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Attorney, I can take them both at the same time, right?
Can.
Yeah, I'm taking them both at the same time, so it's been moved, moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. That is unanimous. Madam Clerk, is there a representative here for them?
There's not.
There is not. Okay. Next. Uh, this is Business Location Expansion, Citigroup Technology Inc. A motion is needed to open the public hearing to receive comments on a proposed business investment program grant to Citigroup Technology Inc.
So moved. What does this do, to open?
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Madam Clerk. Clay?
All right. Citigroup Technology Inc. is the third-largest bank in the U.S., 21st on the Fortune 500 list, and they currently have 275 people, co-working and work-from-home employees in the Mecklenburg County area. The company has established multiple hubs, as they call them, in select cities such as Tucson, Irving, Texas, Tampa, Boise, Sioux Falls, Toronto, and Jacksonville, Florida. Considering a hub in Charlotte for technology development and related operations to support company growth. So, this is not a customer-facing facility. It's a, it's a company-support facility. The projected details for this company would be $16,100,000 in new taxable investment, and that would be split as $13,500,000 in real property and $2,600,000 in business personal property. It's an 85,000-square-foot office that they're going to occupy. They, they envision 510 new employees at an average wage of $133,441. As I said, they have 233 already here, and the competing site for this is Jacksonville, Florida, at one of the existing hubs. So, the projected employment, you can see 510. It's divided out into different categories, all related to banking that supports the company, such as chief operating officer, finance, client, credit management, and private bank wealth, those sorts of things. They're looking at 13034 Ballantyne Corporate Place in Charlotte, which is in the Ballantyne Submarket, Commissioner, District 6. And the incentives on this project are, the county has looked at five years, 50% for $185,341. City of Charlotte's looking at five years at 90% for $197,352. The state is offering a 10-year, what's called J-Dig, a job development investment grant, which is a portion of the payroll taxes that are paid to the state are turned back to the company. And that amount over 12 years would, or 10 years, would be $9,278,250. The important thing about the J-Dig is it requires a local match. So, in this case, $181,000, $185,000 is being helped to unlock $9,278,000 grant from the state. They also have some work, some community college grant of nearly $1 million, $918,000, and several other opportunity tax credit and federal bonding program credits. Total offered to Citigroup from the various entities involved is $11,586,143. So, when we look at the project impacts for this, Citigroup Technology is expected to create an additional 251 jobs by the end of the five-year grant term, above and beyond the jobs they're bringing. And Citigroup Technology is expected to create an additional cumulative net of $416,301 in sales tax, which is not a part of the grant process in revenue by the end of year five. Citigroup is expected to net the county $194,851 in revenue in the final year of the grant for a cumulative net of $358,755 over the five years, and that's over and above the amount of the grant. As you can probably expect from a company the size of Citibank, just like many of our own wonderful banks here, they have excellent corporate culture and community engagement background. I put a list here. I probably won't read all of them, just 'cause it's exhaustive. But they, they do have a comprehensive list of benefits, including tuition assistance, tuition reimbursement, professional development, childcare, elder care, resources at discounts. You can see where they've donated $5 million to five South Florida nonprofits where they have offices. They've donated money in other markets. So, they're, they're very involved. They also, um, they're not just out to be carbon-neutral for themselves. They put out an environmental, social governance report. They're also encouraging and helping their clients, the people they do business with, to become... to become carbon neutral. So it's not just about them. But the list goes on as far as money that they're investing in affordable housing. Uh, I think that this is the kind of client that belongs in Mecklenburg County. And as such, we're requesting that the Board of County Commissioners to vote and adopt a resolution to approve a five-year, 50% investment program grant to Citigroup Technology, Inc. for not to exceed amount of $185,341 and to authorize the county manager to negotiate and execute the contract.
Thank you, Clay. Once again, what we're gonna do is the same rules will apply as we did this last investment. Let me turn to Chair of Economic Development, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, the committee is excited to support this. Uh, we have unanimous support for these 743 jobs, 233 which were existing jobs, and 510 new jobs. Um, the, the community, uh, culture is, is great with this partner. We're excited about that. And, um, and also, you know, this is really important for building occupancy, uh, you know, for, for buildings. And so we're really, uh, excited to support this and hope we can get the support from our colleagues.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do you have a question, Commissioner Leek?
I made the motion. You said I was.
Yeah, I wanted to go to EDC Chair first to.
Did they approve it or not?
Unanimous support, yes.
Unanimous.
Support. Let me, let me go to Commissioner Powell.
Just confirming that the building's already there.
The building is there. Thank you.
All right. District 6 is killing it tonight.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Let me, let me do this. Right now, uh, I'm gonna entertain a motion, number one, to close the public hearing, and then two, to adopt a resolution approving a five-year, 50% business investment program grant to Citigroup Technology, Inc. for not to exceed amount of $185,341 and authorize the county manager to negotiate and execute the contract.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Unanimous, Madam Clerk. Next. Asset Mark Financial Holdings, well, is there anybody, uh, here?
There's none.
No? Okay. Uh, Asset Mark Financial Holdings, Inc. A motion is need to open a public hearing and receive comments on a proposed business investment program grant to Asset Mark Financial Holdings, Inc.
So moved.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Okay. From my last presentation, this is for Asset Mark Financial Holdings, Inc. They're a leading asset management and technology platform solutions provider for financial advisors. What is that? So if you, any of you have brokerage accounts, uh, the broker has technology that they use, the computer, the software that they use, the branding. This company provides that to, to offices around the country who subscribe to them. So they're the ones who provide all the background things that the broker, local broker uses in his, in his work or her work. They're currently headquartered in Concord, California. They're owned by GTCR, a private equity firm based in Chicago. They have more than 1,000 employees. They have offices in Concord, California, Phoenix, Arizona, Chicago, Austin, Texas, Atlanta, Encino, California, and they have a small office here as a result of a purchase they made several years ago. They serve over 10,000 financial advisors nationwide, and as a result, they're in about 317,477 investor households. So this project aims to establish an East Coast hub for the company. They're looking at a $10 million new taxable investment. It's all in business personal property. This is a building that's already there, and they didn't list any real estate improvements as part of their grant application. They're hiring 252 new employees at an average wage of $110,438. As I said, they have about 40 existing employees in Charlotte, and we're competing with Atlanta, Georgia. And their decision timeline is, is September. So the reason for this project is to give them access to key talent and skill in the financial service area. They want to move to a place with a pro-business environment, lower operating costs than Concord, California, or some of the other places. The time zone advantages of being on the East Coast and the opportunity to co-locate cross-functional talent. So when they're serving their brokers, if they're on the West Coast, when it's 5 o'clock there, uh, it's not 5 o'clock here. So having offices on two sides of the continent enable them to provide live support for different hours of the day. The location for this, interestingly enough, is in Commission District 4. Uh, they're located, they're, will be located on South Boulevard if they choose this. It's in a new office building that is currently, uh, only partially full where the Harris Teeter is on South Boulevard. There's a new building just down from that, and that's where they're seeking to locate, in the Sedgefield Submarket, 2801 South Boulevard. Again, you can see a lot of the jobs here, a wide variety of jobs, from office jobs that, uh, are more support-oriented to senior sales relationship managers and, uh, head of quality assurance, computer technology jobs and such. The average salary is $110,00518. And all of these jobs pay at or above the wage locally for those types of jobs. The project incentives that have been created for this project so far that, uh, should be offered if they were to take them, uh, and be granted, from the county, it would be five years, 50% for an amount not to exceed $85,750. The City of Charlotte is offering five years at 90%, $87,575. The community colleges are offering $403,200. And the state is helping with a job development investment grant for 12 years at $1,941,000. So the total incentives offered to this company would be $2,517,525. Again, when we look at the, uh, the, uh, cost-benefit analysis, uh, they are expected to create an additional 106 jobs above and beyond the ones they bring by the end of the five-year grant term. They're expected to create an additional cumulative net of 709,160 jobs in sales tax revenue by the end of year five. And Asset Mark Financial Holdings is expected to net the county $111,647 in revenue in the final year of the grant for a cumulative net of $390,708 over the five-year term. Now, this is a smaller company, but we still look into their offerings and, and how they operate. It's a west coast company. They offer full medical, dental, vision, mental health, coverage for employees, flexible spending accounts, healthcare savings accounts, tuition reimbursement, professional development. They're also offering second chance hiring. Uh, and, and they have what are called employee resource groups at work, including Women of Asset Mark, Pride Plus, Black Professional Network, and for the west coast office, Asian and Pacific Islanders Network. And you see some information here from the person who heads their black employee resource group, who is proud to be working at the company and gives testimonial. This is a picture that just shows some of the women in Asset Mark. They have a, a symposium every year about women in finance. Uh, they're committed to working with our local partners. We actually ask that question now for CPCC, uh, for Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools and Charlotte Works. Some of their, uh, uh, some of their jobs do not require college education. They also have an internship program. One of their programs, they have, um, elects to give $10,000 to selected advisors, calls of choice. So when they're in a market, the advisor in that market gets to pick who they think, or the office gets to vote on the cause they would like, and the company will give $10,000 to that cause. Uh, they also have a, a, um, tuition grant that they use for disadvantaged people to sit for their licensing exams. So if you meet the criteria, you have to be of a certain minority type. You can't make a certain amount of money. You can't have your license. And they will help pay for your cost to take the test. So at this, they, they meet all the requirements. They also have a waste reduction. The lady I spoke with was very involved in, uh, in trying to state the things that they try to do from a, a corporate standpoint in, in waste reduction, energy efficiency, water conservation, sustainable transportation. Um, they offer commute alternatives such as a flexible spending account for commuting, uh, water bottle refill stations, things like that. So tonight, we are requesting that the Board of County Commissioners vote and adopt a resolution to approve a five-year, 50% business investment program grant to Asset Mark Financial Holdings for not to exceed amount of $85,750 and to authorize the county manager to negotiate and execute the contract. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Clay. I appreciate that. Let me go to Chair of EDC.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, the committee is excited about these 292 jobs. Um, this, uh, we like their corporate culture, um, at this, um, at this employer and, and the benefits that they offer. So we're excited to unanimously support, um, this VIP.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Townsend Ingram?
I'm excited that it's in District 4.
I am too.
I'm going with my britches if we ever get to Districts 2 and 3. Um, which brings me to the question that I have with regard to equity. Hopefully, there is a scorecard, and I'm open to, you know, the education that everyone will give. But like, is there an incentive for, um, or let me ask this question with regard to this company. Um, was there consideration given for, like, I'm sorry, I don't even know how to phrase my question. So I'm gonna reserve it.
Okay. All right. So let me go to Commissioner Dunlap, Commissioner Griffin, then Commissioner Altman.
Well, since Commissioner Griffin wants to talk, I'm almost tempted not to speak.
Wait a minute.
I'll make, I'll make it simple.
That's the whole committee.
I'll, I'll make it simple.
We got new people.
One of the reasons why we engage in these kinds of negotiations is that the tax dollars that are being generated allows the board the flexibility to use those funds whichever way we see fit.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Griffin?
You know, I just added up the new jobs, but they're also, uh, jobs that are already here. Got 1,088. There's an article in the paper where Charlotte lost another banking job of 1,000. We just gained over 1,000 new jobs plus existing jobs with our votes tonight. But the piece I wanted to, to raise up that I think sometimes the press and others miss, I know the committee has heard me, and committee agrees with this, is the relationship with one of our greatest assets, our community college, Central Piedmont Community College. Every one of these, uh, businesses has a relationship, a partnership established with our local community college in terms of job training. And you can start at Torremont and move right on up the ladder in terms of opportunities. And I just wish that there was a way, because most people don't watch county commission meeting at 8:15 on a whatever evening, but we could share this phenomenal opportunity, uh, that we just voted, or will be voting on, uh, with the greater community, that there are jobs if you don't have a, a college degree, but you can get additional training at Central Piedmont. And that's like an entry level. But also, if it's middle income and you want to improve your, your, your financial status, you can still move up. So this is a whole range of opportunities that we're voting on tonight. And I'm really, really, really excited about the fact that each one of these is connected to our community college system. And I just wish that we could figure out a way to share it with the greater community in terms of upward mobility and job training and workforce development. So I, I just appreciate what the, the board is doing, but I just wish there was a way that we could communicate that grid. I know that's not your area, but I just wish there was some way.
Thank you. Let me go to Commissioner Powell and Commissioner Leek.
So I see the building on the map. Who owns the building?
I should know that. It's owned by Aston Properties.
So is it them?
Aston Properties owns, uh, no, it's a developer, a local developer owns the building. They're leasing.
So they're currently there?
That, they will be leasing space from Aston Properties if they go there, yes. I mean, they already have a small office there. They're gonna, if, if this goes, they're gonna expand the office.
Thank you.
Was that it?
That's all.
Okay. Commissioner Leek?
Yes, I'm so happy that he mentioned CPCC, and I'd like to know why we never include Johnson C. Smith or Queens College in the training process. We dear it directly to CPCC. Is it because it's vocational training only or academics?
I think that's largely the vocational part. The state community college system, during the process of recruiting the company, offers a grant. In this case, you know, it could be a half a million dollars or so. So they give Central Piedmont the money to provide the training if the company needs it. And if the company doesn't take advantage of it, they don't get it. But if, when they do, uh, let, that, that's one of the things that encourages them to work with Central Piedmont, is when they go and say, we, we're looking for, that Central Piedmont says, we've got this money here earmarked for you. I mean, what can we do to help you? So it gives them the opportunity to have that conversation.
But I would hope that the businesses, the companies would look at these other three colleges, two colleges in, in this county, because we do finance CPCC above and beyond what we should, along with not including Johnson C. Smith or Queens College to see what they offer in the committee. I hope they would ask those questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Altman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to direct my comments to a certain WFAE host who is a very talented young man, who, I didn't watch the interview, I admit, but I heard he called this corporate welfare. And I care, not because he said something about a vote that I took that, that offends me, but because I care what the public thinks. Because when the public gets the message that this is corporate welfare, it plants a seed of distrust and cynicism that is a part of the broken contract between people and government. So the people need to really understand what's going on here. I challenge that very talented WFAE host.
Mike Collins?
To tell me, to tell me that if he had the choice, you know, these are, this is a competitive business environment. Torremont could have gone to another town in Kansas where they were getting incentives. And we had the opportunity to bring $56 million in taxable investment to this county, to bring 326 new jobs with an average salary of $76. And do you know what, what sort of refund we had to give for a $56 million new taxable investment? $641,000. The taxpayer in this county is way ahead on Torremont. Let's look at Citigroup. To bring $16 million in new taxable investment and to bring 510 new jobs at an average salary of $133,000, what did we have to do to incentivize them to come here? Refund $185,000. I challenge that very talented, smart WFAE host to tell me he would have come to a different conclusion for the welfare of this community.
Is he here tonight?
With Asset Mark Financial Holdings, we have the opportunity to compete against Atlanta, Georgia, to bring $10 million in taxable investment, which, which, and furthermore, 252 new jobs at $110,000 per, per person. Would he have said no to that? I don't think so, because I know he cares about this environment, just like I do, just like every single commissioner who voted in favor of this. So let's be clear with the people, because trust and dignity and, 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 and doing the right thing matters. And thank you for letting me go over.
Thank you.
Give me, give me one second, Chris. Um, Chair of EDC, go, go ahead, and then I'll.
I just want to say, you might want to listen to the, the thing before you speak to it, because I don't think he was just talking about VIPs. So to, just to set the record straight. Maybe listen. That's my problem.
Thank you. I think I prefaced my comments by saying I had not yet heard it.
I know. So that's what I'm saying. Maybe you should before you make the big speech.
But you know what? I hear people saying all the time that we're engaging in corporate welfare, and I wanted to set the record straight. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, everybody. So a couple of things. Um, one of the board's priority, let, let me just back up and say thank you to the EDC committee, number one, for carefully vetting these projects. I want to thank staff certainly for, you know, really leaning in and, and allowing this, these sorts of opportunities to be presented to this community. Um, economic development is one of our board priorities, and I want the community to be well aware that it is a priority of this board. One of the things I think gets lost in the sauce at times is that a lot of us as commissioners want to be able to fund initiatives in ways that do not require raising taxes. So we have to look at additional revenue streams and different sources to raise that income. And sometimes this is a vehicle that can be leveraged that allows us to be able to support initiatives. So if you think about our other priorities as it relates to, um, health and wellness, if you look at environmental stewardship, well, we want to have, um, land acquisition dollars or, uh, things to build greenways, initiatives like the homes program, that, that's important to me, uh, affordable housing initiatives. When you take the cumulative impact of the revenue that's generated, um, it allows us to support this level of programming, and it, and it allows us to do it over time as well. And so I. And so I am just a firm believer, and I'm really glad that our board has chosen economic development as one of our priorities. Because it does allow, regardless of what our personal priorities are, our personal passions, all of it has some level of funding around it. I do wanna go back to Commissioner Griffin's point, and I saw Suzette's mind swirling around. I suspect there's a press release coming somewhere. But I, I do think that's important, because I think people do, to Commissioner Altman's point, people do believe that this is corporate welfare, which it is not. When you look at the number of jobs that are created, the revenue that we get from this, and, and what it does is, it does something that Commissioner Griffin talks about all the time. You get to raise the floor and the ceiling at the same time. And I think we've been smart about what we've invested in. I think you all have leveraged your expertise to bring us projects that you know align with the values of this board, which aligns with the values of the community. And you can see that when you look at every single slide deck that clearly shows the things that these entities are doing beyond just the, the core work. So again, I wanna thank you all. I wanna thank the board, EDC Committee, and everyone for, for lifting these things up at this time. Is there anybody here from, from there? No? Okay. So this time I'll take a motion to, one, close the public hearing, and two, adopt a resolution to approve a five-year, fifty percent business investment program grant to Asset Mark Financial Holdings, Inc., for not to exceed amount of eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars and to authorize the county manager to negotiate and execute the contract.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Thank you. Now we will move. Thank you, Clay, and economic development team. We'll move to the manager's report. Manager Bryant.
Thank you, Chairman Jarrell. I have one item, excuse me, one item under my manager's report, and I am delighted to introduce to the general public two new members of my executive team, beginning with Michelle Atreed. Michelle will serve as the Deputy County Manager for Financial Services. She will have oversight of Mecklenburg County's Finance Department, the Tax Collector's Office, Information Technology Services, Human Resources, and the Assessor's Office. Michelle previously worked for Prince William County, Virginia for thirty years, most recently serving as Acting Deputy County Executive for Government Operations, Performance, and Innovation. She also served more than eleven years as Prince Williams County's Chief Financial Officer, two years as Deputy Finance Director, along with other roles of increasing responsibility after joining the organization in nineteen ninety-three, including serving as Acting Human Resources Director. As CFO, she provided fiscal stewardship and accountability for more than two billion in public funds. Her professional experience also includes working with a regional accounting firm as a senior auditor and as a staff accountant with the U.S. Government Accountability Office. Michelle Atreed is a member of the Government Finance Officers Association, a nonprofit organization that aims to improve financial management for state and local governments. She is a recipient of a Lifetime Achievement Award from the Virginia Women in Public Finance and recently participated in the Virginia Women's Municipal Leadership Institute and the National Association of Counties High Performance Leadership Academy. She has served on the Board for the Virginia Public Building Authority, an appointment made by the Governor and the Virginia Association of Counties Finance and Election Steering Committee. She served as a trustee on three municipal pension plans and one post-employment benefit plan in addition to serving on various steering committees for Prince William County. Michelle Atreed holds a bachelor's degree in accounting from Virginia Tech University and a master of public administration from George Mason University. Welcome to the team. Can I see her?
We didn't see her.
She stood up.
She just stood up.
She stood up. I still say I didn't see her. Now I see her, thank you.
Also, Dr. Kim Campbell was served as Deputy County Manager for the Combined Health and Human Service Agency, which includes the Departments of Child, Family, and Adult Services, Public Health, Community Resources, and Community Support Services. She will also oversee the New Housing and Community Development Office. Dr. Campbell has more than thirty years of experience in state and local government as well as nonprofit organizations. Dr. Campbell most recently served as Broward County, Florida's Deputy County Administrator, responsible for the general management of county government operations with an eight billion dollar budget and more than seven thousand employees in a community of more than two million residents. She previously served as an Assistant County Administrator, Human Services Deputy Department Director, and Human Services Deputy Department Director. In her role as Director of Broward County's Human Services Department, Dr. Campbell provided leadership to more than six hundred and fifty staff and managed a hundred and sixty-five million dollar annual budget with more than one hundred provider contracts across sixty-five agencies representing service delivery in multiple systems of care. Prior to working in Florida, Dr. Campbell served as Director of the Children's Mental Health System of Care for Mecklenburg County with primary responsibility for designing, implementing, and evaluating services for children with serious emotional disturbances with complex needs who were multi-system involved. Prior to working for Mecklenburg County, Dr. Campbell served as the Assistant Director of the Children's System of Care Branch in the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. Dr. Campbell is a member of the National Association of Counties Health Policy Committee to help shape national policy, National Association of Social Workers, National Forum for Black Public Administrators, and the International City County Managers Association. She is a member of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated.
Yay!
Dr. Campbell has been recognized by Legacy Magazine as one of twenty-five most influential and prominent black women in business and industry. She was a recipient of the Urban League Margaret Roach Humanitarian Award, the Broward Community and Family Healthcare Center's Trailblazer Award, and the Community-Based Connection Social Justice and Equity Champion Award. Finally, Dr. Campbell, Campbell was recognized by the Florida Panthers Professional Hockey Team for Black Excellence. Dr. Campbell holds a bachelor's and a master's degree in social work from the Mexico State University, University, and a doctorate in social work from Barry University. Welcome, Dr. Campbell. Chairman Jarrell and members of the board, Ms. Atreed and Dr. Campbell are both known across the country as strong and committed leaders in their respective fields of finance and human services. The two of them, along with Derrick Ramos and Dr. Leslie Johnson, who also have very rewarding professional careers, as you know, reflect my commitment to building a strong executive team and aligning the organization to support our shared vision for Mecklenburg County's future. And lastly, although he's not here, he's in Philadelphia, I'd like to thank Dr. Reynard Washington for his service as interim Deputy County Manager for Health and Human Services. Listen, this young, brilliant, and talented guy simply gets stuff done. And I appreciate his assistance in ensuring that I have a smooth transition as I put together my executive team that is finally here. And I look forward to working with each one of them as we support your priorities moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, and welcome to both of you. We are so glad to have you. Thank you. All right, moving forward with the agenda, we're to consent items. Is there a motion to approve those items, not pull from consent?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. All right, pull consent items. I'm gonna start with two five dash zero four three three, Temporary Construction Easement Hoover Creek Greenway. Commissioner Leek.
Yes, I pulled this because there are questions about the greenway. And what we're saying, the developed cost of construction is forty-four, what is that, forty-four million?
Yes, the developer's total cost of construction is forty-four million, six hundred and one thousand, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the townhomes that are to be built.
And how many are there?
I don't have the exact number of how many will be built. I'll have to follow back up, because that wasn't a question I received in advance.
Thank you. So, so moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Next item, two five dash zero four five one, Grant Application, U.S. Department of Justice Office for Victims of Crime, OVC. Commissioner Leek.
I pulled this because the victims of crime is detrimental in this community and across this country. Those persons suffer. There was an article that's on the news just this morning about the shooting at this house someplace about a couple of months ago. And one man is without a wheelchair, without even medical care. So I'm hoping this is gonna impact his life and those who are suffering. So moved, Mr. Chairperson.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, Madam Clerk. Next item, two five dash zero four five five, Public Hearing on Organizing a Metropolitan Public Transportation Authority, MPTA. Commissioner Leek.
This has already been discussed with us, and I'm asking us to support it and to make sure those who put the information out, these alphabets, people don't know what they are. So you clarify those answers as relates to writing. So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
To answer your question, Commissioner Leek, you wanted to know what the acronym for PAVE meant?
Yes. Whenever we put out information, it's just alphabet. People don't know what you're talking about.
We'll, we'll make sure that happens.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am. Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Madam Clerk, next item, two five dash zero four six eight. This is a Capital Reserve Request for Mecklenburg County Sports Plus, Sportsplex Synthetic Turf Fields. Commissioner Leek.
I pulled this because there's been many questions about where we are applying this surf for different fields, turf, I'm sorry. So I questioned it. And it's going to go where? In Matthews, Sports Parkway in Matthews?
That is correct. The facility is located at twenty-four twenty-five Sports Parkway in Matthews.
How much is it gonna cost the county?
The fields are being replaced since they've reached their useful life. The request to appropriate seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in available funds from the Synthetic Turf Capital Reserve Fund to complete Phase Two of the Synthetic Turf renovation.
And this question comes majorly from high school football fields that's not using the same turf across this county. And maybe those in my district are the ones who are liking. But I'm gonna, so moved, Mr. Chairperson, that we do it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, Madam Clerk. That's unanimous. Last item I have is two five dash zero four eight zero. It's a budget amendment, and that's Knight's Baseball LLC. Two commissioners pulled this. This was Commissioner Leek and Commissioner Powell. I'm gonna start with Commissioner Powell on this.
So, I pulled it for the same reason that I think Commissioner Leek pulled it, because I wasn't, I wasn't here in two thousand and seven, so I wasn't familiar, and I just wanted to get clarity on it. And my understanding is that if we pay it off early with the two and a half million, that we will save almost six million. Is that correct? Yeah. So, I just, I, I just wanted to understand.
Thank you, Commissioner Leek.
And, and thank you for her pulling it also, young lady. Are we saying that we're gonna save or we will be the recipients of ninety-three point three million and fund balance above the threshold policy that's being paid out?
That's correct.
Thank you. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, Madam Clerk. That's unanimous. Next, moving to Commissioner Reports. Let me see who has a report tonight.
I have one.
Commissioner Meyer, and then Commissioner Leek.
All I wanna say is there is a terrible turnout to vote and early voting. So please get out and vote. This is your opportunity to speak your minds on government.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for saying that. Commissioner Leek.
I'm going to support what she's saying about voting. It's imperative that we go out and vote and not wait until after it's done to question why did that take place? Or I did not understand. Information has been disseminated across this county every day, every night, all day on TV. If you are not listening, then that's part of your responsibility to be knowledgeable. The second thing, in this magazine called People's Magazine, a young man who has moved to Charlotte and is addressing the needs and bring forty-seven foster children that he has, and he's adopted three. I have invited him to come to our next meeting to be here so you can meet this young man, showing someone who believes in what he believes in. He's been across the country doing the same thing. So I'll let you know when he's coming. And the name is an African name, and I cannot pronounce it. So he will be here, and you'll know then who he is, Mr. Chairperson.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I, I just wanna say one thing. I'm just so pleased with the leadership that we have on this board. And I'm talking about the chairman of the board, who does not find any fault with any of us to keep us from serving or denying us the right to serve when the people have elected us. And for this board to select a manager that we have, and we could not find room in this building once we were dedicating the process of bringing him to the public. And that's our manager, and that's our chairperson, who is not in, I mean, it does not take strife with us because we stress what we believe in and hold it accountable and try to use it against us in the community. So thank you so much, Mr. Chairperson and Mr. Manager. And maybe I need to say the vice chair, she's done an excellent job, and I respect your ability to continue to do that job. So thank you for allowing me to say that.
Thank you, Commissioner Leek. Commissioner Griffin.
Yeah, a week or so ago, along with several of my colleagues on the Commission, attended a legislative breakfast at the Jewish Community Center. And I was really taken by some comments from Rabbi Asher Knight. And I just wanted to read a couple of sentences from his presentation. Says, "The Charlotte region contains multitudes. It includes deep wealth and deep poverty. Where in some neighborhoods, life moves differently. People who dream of more growth and people who fear being displaced by it. Leadership calls on a different kind of muscle. Our task is not to eliminate complexity, but to navigate it. Being willing to sit with the discomfort that comes with no single solution feels perfect. That is why the work of governing is a covenant work. A covenant is more than a contract. Contracts are transactional. Covenants are relational. My faith is tied to yours, and I cannot thrive if you are diminished." And it was so important for me, as this board and the new manager embark on a new process to improve the quality of life for the residents of Mecklenburg County, that we have to use that, that other muscle to be successful for all of our residents here in Mecklenburg County. So I wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Powell and Commissioner Dunlap.
Thank you, Commissioner Griffin. I love that. Send me a copy. I love it.
I'll send you the host.
Thank you, thank you. I just wanted to take the time, since Commissioner Leek was giving praise to leadership. I was telling Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell today how, I feel like I'm gonna cry, how much I appreciate Attorney Wade. Every single day, all the questions that I, that, that I ask where I really need your input, no matter what day it is, you are there. You're like, just so reliable, so pure-hearted, so smart. And as the years go by, I'm like, I don't know if we give you enough gratitude. And so I hope you feel it, because I, like, I can always count on you, and that is the best feeling. So thank you for all the work you do, and I just want you to know, like, how grateful I am. I don't wanna tell other people and not tell you, you know? So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dunlap.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Usually I try to find some good out of all that has happened, especially in my district over the last couple of weeks. And so I want to shout out two people. First of all, I wanna shout out our chairman. First of all, I want to shout out our chairman. Tonight, you heard a lot about Reagan Drive. And so we have been engaged in what's going on. The city has been engaged. The NAACP has been engaged. The police department has been engaged. So everybody has been engaged in what's going on in Reagan Drive. And when we had our town hall meeting, our chair thought it not robbery to come and join us. Also, was treated with a two-hour ride with our county manager. In fact, we had to make some shortcuts to get back to our town hall meeting on time. But the county manager came to District Three, rode the district, and I had to show him what's going on in District Four while we're at it. But the opportunity to share his vision to our community, I thought was phenomenal. And of course, after the meeting was over, everybody wanted to talk to him, and we got put out, because we did have a hard stop, but we cheated a little bit anyway. But thank you, manager, for coming to engage the people of District Three, so that they know and understand why this board chose you to be his next manager.
And if he was late, it was because he was meeting with me and my team of people. So thank you for that.
Well, what Commissioner Dunlap did not mention with respect to Reagan Drive is that he has been engaged in the district, been deeply engaged. So I wanted to make sure that we lifted that up as well. So at this time, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.